To presentations, Dr. Grimsley.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon from your Panther family. So much has happened since we last met. November has been an extremely busy month at our CPS. We have wrapped up our first quarter and winter sports are underway after such a strong showing from our fall sports teams. A huge congratulations to all our athletes, and this was just in, after I had already submitted my report to you, but we received some postseason recognition for our girls volleyball team. Summer Shackelford, first team all district, first team all region, first team all state. Abigail Atkins, first team all district, first team all region, second team all state. Dakota Stringfellow, second team all district, first team all region. Brooke Atkins, second team all region. And Beth Barron, second team all region. So that was excellent recognition there. Also, we found out that our varsity girls head coach, Jeff Atkins, was named the Virginia Coach of the Year for Girls Basketball. That is all classes one through six. We're very, very proud for that honor, and we look forward to seeing very similar success this year as we did last year, winning the state championship, of course. It's almost the same team, so, you know. Last month, both the schools celebrated and honored our veterans in unique fashion. At RCES, the newly begun tradition of the Veterans Day hallway parade took place on November 10th, where participating students carried photos of family members or close family friends who served in the military as a tribute for their service. Additionally, several veterans joined the celebration and were accompanied by their students for the march as patriotic music played over the loudspeakers. This event concluded in the cafeteria with a cookie reception for the special guests and their families. At RCHS, a special Veterans Day assembly took place where RCHS students heard remarks from Mr. Darren Stevens, current EMS coordinator. Mr. Stevens spoke eloquently to the student body about the importance of service to one's country and community, and shared some of his experiences in his 30-plus years involved in public safety, including serving as a military policeman in the US Army. Both events were very touching, and the students just learned a lot about service and had the opportunity to honor our veterans, so that was very special. Speaking of EMS, the EMS and healthcare professionals class, led by Ms. Catherine Waters, completed the basic life support CPR course on November 9th. Huge congratulations to the students for earning this life-saving certification. Also, school board members, the clerks, and I were fortunate to attend the VSBA conference last month, and we're very honored to learn we were recognized for excellence in risk management by Bancor, our coverage and risk management service provider. Our CPS was recognized specifically for excelling in risk management with an emphasis on school safety, injury prevention, and overall risk management. Our CPS celebrated Native American Heritage Month in November as well. As part of this recognition, the cafeteria staff treated students to a special Native American dish, polenta, along with chicken noodle soup, peas, and fruit. It's yummy lunch. On Thursday, November 16th, Commit to Be Fit held its highly anticipated Staff Farmers Market, where local farmers are invited to set up tents and tables full of local produce, protein, apples, jams, bread, and much more. The day began with turkeys being delivered to all of our employees and ended with a gift of a market bag with $40 vouchers to shop among the participating vendors, made possible by grant funding, of course. Students in the National Honor Society volunteered at the Rappahannock County Food Pantry, assisting other volunteers and staff with the Thanksgiving food pickup on November 21st. The students helped distribute turkeys, fresh produce, desserts, and more to provide bountiful meals to local families. Finally, before buses departed for the holiday break, the RCPS Transportation Department feasted on a fantastic Thanksgiving dinner in the bus garage. The annual gathering organized by Al Payne and Chris King is held to show gratitude for our drivers. Everyone enjoyed a delicious deep-fried turkey prepared by Al and all the tasty fixings. It was a great way to honor our drivers, our CPS family style. As always, we thank you for your continued support of our school system, and on behalf of our CPS, I wish you all and your families a very blessed holiday season, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. Do you have any questions for me?
Sure, I just had a few things. I had one constituent the other day stalk me on the road and just ask about where we ended up on state funding, because the whole budget season got extended and the legislative process became quite complicated vis-à-vis the outstanding funding matter. And I wonder if you could just wrap that up for us in a nutshell, so the public is at least aware where we ended up after the conclusion of the budget season.
Sure, so after this current budget season, it ended up where we, our bill, House Bill 1443, that was going to remove a supplemental basic aid cap, yielding about an additional million dollars worth of state funding for the school system. It ended up in the Senate Finance Committee, and then it was shot down there at that point, even after getting 100% in the House. But it was because of the J-Larke study, and that's what the Senate Finance Committee said. We want to see what the J-Larke study says when it came out. It was issued and pretty much reiterated a lot of the things that we had said in our arguments for the reason for the bill. It is not dead altogether. We have it under good authority to think that the governor may put it in his budget. It's not, I can't say whether it will be in a caboose or in the next biennium. My inclination is if it is there, it will be in the next biennium budget. So not anymore fiscal year 24 money. But we are still working on a contingency plan should that not happen. So Delegate Weber has been very engaged still to this point. I have been engaged with the Bath Superintendent as well, who is actually studying yoking agreements with Augusta County at this time, just like Highland does. So those delegates and senators in the region are also engaged. So we're hoping for a co-patron bill and also, across party lines, bipartisanship carrying on in the Senate as well. So we're working on that contingency.
Thank you, thank you for that. And then, I don't remember when it was, if it was after our last meeting or not, but Ms. Donahue and I did attend the event with the USDA school lunch person. And there was a lot there that I thought was very encouraging about the schools. Number one, you have the reputation of pursuing grant money whenever possible, and that's a great example of that. And I don't know the absolute amount of the grant, but it's not insignificant. It allowed you to hire someone to basically turn those meals into, call it farm-fresh, or at least from scratch meals. And so you're all to be applauded for that, and obviously it speaks to the innovation that I think we all in Rappahannock County expect to see and hope to continue to see coming out of our very small and nimble school system. So you're congratulated really for that, and it seemed like the USDA folks were really impressed. And then finally, I just, you mentioned Cat Waters, who's now, it seems she's wearing, I don't know how many hats.
She's incredible.
But she's now our county volunteer recruitment and retention coordinator, and I think we all need to seize this opportunity, both vis-à-vis her presence in the school and maybe inspiring young people to get into fire and rescue services, and then separately to bolster our volunteer system. So I hope we all can work together to take full advantage of her skillset.
Oh, we are. You just talked to her a little bit. I mean, I'm ready to join after I talk to her.
Well, you can drive a bus, so we know we can get you to drive, no problem.
Thank you.
The only thing I have is, on that group of young ladies, I know Abby's a senior. How many others are seniors?
Out of that group that I just mentioned, who? Yeah, we have a couple this time. Let's see, Summer's not, Abby is, Dakota, Brooke, Beth, so four out of the five. You had to remind me of that.
I know, sorry.
One year at a time.
Yeah, it's exciting to watch them play, and the fact that they can play so many sports very well is impressive.
They're not a choice. There's only so many girls.
Right, that's it.
This is true.
Anything else?
Thank you. Hope you have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Company Four Monthly Report.
Our chief is traveling, so it falls to me to be solo up here today. I'll start with the calls. In November, we had a total of 29 EMS calls, and we responded to only five. Means 24 we didn't get out on. Fire calls, there were 10, and we responded to six, meaning we didn't get out on four. We did have one transport in November. All the others were assist calls. And it really varies how much involvement there is. I was out on Lee Highway today with that car that had rolled over, and like 11 units were dispatched. Four of them were there. I didn't help at all. I went mainly to watch and learn. But then a couple of weeks ago, I was called to one where my help and assistance, just in lifting, was necessary. We couldn't get this guy out of his house without the extra pair of hands. So it varies whether those assistance were meaningful or not. The EMR class, Emergency Medical Responder, ended with passing, all 10 people passed. Seven of those are our volunteers, Company Four. And five of them have said that they intend to do the EMT course. It'll start in late February at Company Four. And the instructor wanted to wait until late February to start the EMT class, so that we could have a couple of runs as EMRs under our belt and get a little experience and know what we were getting into before we got into the EMT class, which made sense to me. And it's also helped me take a different attitude about all these calls we get. I had been feeling a little, unhappy isn't the right word, overwhelmed by how many calls we were getting where we would be one of multiple units, and we'd get there and there wouldn't be a lot that we could do. But now with that perspective from that instructor in the EMR course, I'm glad that we have a lot of opportunities to get our people out, even if all we do is watch and learn and get the exposure. I hope you noticed we're having our first fundraiser next Saturday night at the fire hall with the dinner barbecue. And I want to mention that Fuck Your EMS, we've had a relationship, as has Culpeper, with Fuck Your EMS for a long time, and they've gone to a single-chief structure instead of having a volunteer, and they've formed an EMS committee with votes. We've been invited to attend, and our chief has taken the position that we ought to have somebody from each company going to these, even though we don't have a vote. So myself or Susan Fitzgerald, who's a nurse practitioner, will be attending those meetings, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'd just say, it's not really a comment on Company Four, but it also carries over into the Public Safety Committee, is that typically the citizen representative is not a chief. And we now have a situation where the citizen representative is a chief. And so I think we should really solicit for a new appointment in January.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, next we have the RAP Tax Free Program Overview with Ann Yeoman.
Everybody's favorite subject, taxes, right?
Tax rebates.
I'm sleeping with these documents.
So, let me, so this is going to be a very simple, sort of overview of what is obviously a very complicated subject. So, yeah, there's some slides up there. So they, it has been many years since there has been free tax filing in Rappahannock County. People Inc. used to have services here a long time ago. There was a person who kind of did it off the cuff at the library, was not necessarily certified by the IRS, well, had to be certified by the IRS to a certain level. But there hasn't been any systematic free tax return preparation. So we, a whole group of us, there's about 15, including myself, volunteers now, are working to get a free tax filing site off the ground for the next filing season. So a lot of the work is happening now in terms of recruiting the volunteers, starting to get them trained, that sort of thing. But the primary thing, I think, the first thing to understand is that what we really want to do is two things, sort of the mission, is that people get their taxes filed for free, they're not paying $200, $250, whatever it is, to someone to prepare, what is usually a relatively simple return. The second part is that if they do use free tax filing, because of the quality of the training and the quality review and so forth, we can pretty much ensure that they're going to get all of the credits and refunds for which they're eligible. That can be anywhere from a few hundred dollars to thousands of dollars, literally, depending on the size of the household, the composition of the household, the amount of income, the sources of income. So these, you can guess, there are a lot of variables there. So I have included here just a couple of samples to give you a sense of the depth of need in Rappahannock County. So I don't know if any of you are familiar with what's called the ALIS report. It's put out periodically by United Way, and what ALIS stands for is Asset Limited, Income Constrained, and Employed. So you're basically talking about the working poor. And this is a report that you can get down to the county level. You can even get it down by zip code, you can get it down by supervisory district, all kinds of details. And what that report shows is that there are a little over 2,700 households in the county, who, almost 2,800, who basically are not making a living wage. So this is not about the federal poverty household level, it's about basically what you need to live: food, clothing, shelter, essentials, those kinds of things. So about 26% of households overall in the county are in that ALIS group, but it also includes people who meet the federal poverty thresholds. And there's just a couple of, there's a big range, obviously, depending on the composition of the household, but for a single adult, something under, over $30,000; for a family of four, something over $64,000. And I think you all know that the median household income for the county is somewhere in that mid-60 range, right? So, the other piece I looked at, I talked with Gail Crooks, she'll get here today, about what's in their caseload. And she tells me that there are about, roughly, 270 families or individuals in the caseload for the Department of Social Services, but who also are working. So again, where we're really trying to get to is primarily is those households who are working but are not making a lot of money to ensure that they get the maximum refunds, credits, whatever they're eligible for, and not pay a couple hundred bucks to have that returned up. Okay, so I do need to say the ALIS data is 2021. In Rappahannock last year, only about 20 households used the ARP free sites. We did, I did a little bit of push marketing, people went to Loray, went to Front Royal. The latest IRS statistics on people who use free filing is from 2020, and in that case, there were only 30 households. So we're talking about, overall, not just ARP, could have been other free sources as well. So we're talking about a very tiny percentage of folks who could really benefit from free filing so far. So I'd be happy if we're overwhelmed, you know, with folks. We're working very hard to, well, gradually trying to get the word out. So let's look at who has to file a tax return. Obviously, it depends on your household composition, your income, your sources of income, and whatever. But one of the messages here is who would actually benefit the most from filing, even if they don't have to file? So for example, someone who has only, who has social security income but who also has a little bit of income and whose taxes are not being withheld from their social security, which is an option, should file. And they may find out, not only they might get a refund, they might also, depending on their household composition, get other funds as well. Maybe some earned income tax, well, not earned income tax credit, because you can't do that anymore for 65 and older. People who have public benefits but who have earned income, people who are below the required filing figure but who, if they file, could get lots of things. You do not have to be a Rappahannock resident to use our services, but that's where we're focused. Okay. I do have to say that there are some returns that are considered out of scope. So for example, we can't do a return if there are digital assets involved. Unfortunately, we can't do form returns, okay? We can do people who are self-employed, but not, of which there are many in Rappahannock, but we can't do them if they themselves have employees. Okay, so we can't do everybody, but we can get to a lot of people. So I want to talk a lot about the volunteer training because it is intense. It is very intense. It's fairly lengthy, a lot of hours. It's coordinated through the IRS and with ARP. They both have all kinds of training materials. The ARP in particular has really fabulous training materials. Jeremy Ross, some of you may be familiar with because he's a volunteer at the Food Pantry, is kind of our lead trainer, but we also have a couple of other people from ARP that are helping us, and several of our, I shouldn't say several, two of our volunteers actually have previous experience as paid tax preparers. So they will have, everyone who does a tax return at the site will have had intensive training, will be actually certified by the IRS, they have to pass tests with the IRS at the advanced level. ARP doesn't let you do returns unless you reach the advanced level. That does not make you a CPA, or that sort of thing. The tax layer software that the IRS uses is very much like TurboTax, but that's what they use for training, and it's actually what is used for actually filing the returns. And so everybody gets trained on that. Can pretty much handle the most common deductions that'll come up, you know, education, childcare, child credit, sorry, and earned income tax credit is the biggest one. All of the volunteers, there are a lot of people who are not tax preparers. The people who greet you when you come in, the people that are helping the schedule, the translators, the people who are doing exit surveys, everybody in the site, everybody who has any interaction with a taxpayer, also has to be trained and complete a very detailed assessment for issues around confidentiality and ethics. That's a big issue for taxes, obviously. And there actually is an agreement for each volunteer with the IRS that details their duties and responsibilities and how they are restricted. So that's a major issue for us. One of the, two other things I want to say about the actual tax preparation. One is, students can be volunteers, but they cannot be tax preparers. So they could do some of these other roles. So if you have young people who are interested in community service, like you were mentioning before, they could actually do all of the training and the certification. It's just the IRS doesn't allow people under 18 to actually prepare returns, that sort of thing. But they could do these other things. The other is that the accuracy rate for the free sites is higher on a national level, is higher than it is for paid preparers. And one of the reasons for that is that every return has a second review. So the trained counselor goes through, does the return, whatever. The quality reviewer goes through it again a second time. It may go back, and then if it is filed electronically, and all of this is filed electronically, right, in real time, and for some reason or another it's kicked back, the quality reviewer can immediately address it, see what's going on, and fix the problem then, instead of the taxpayer getting something later. I also want to emphasize the, again, another aspect of security and confidentiality. There is no, the tax system obviously collects a lot of information about you, that's kind of IRS information. But the free tax sites are not allowed to collect information. Other, you know, what's in the system is there. We're not allowed to keep it, collect it, or use it without the explicit permission of the individual. So there will be an additional consent form that basically says, can we use your information, not in a personal way, but if we want to report what's the total amount of refunds, if we want to report the number of households with children, those kinds of things, those aggregated numbers, we would still need to have permission from any individual to have their information included in that aggregate, okay? But there will never be any personal information released anywhere. The taxpayer takes their return when they leave, and any other documents that they bring, we don't keep it, you know? That's another reason to have the review, so we can solve the problems right on site. So the schedule is there every other Saturday, starting in early February, alternate Thursdays. We don't know at this point for sure what the demand will be. We're doing a lot of outreach through the Food Pantry, through the Benevolent Fund, through CCLC, through the school system, through Rapid Home, through churches, pretty much any avenue we can find to get the word out that this is happening. People will be able to schedule appointments online with a Google, basically a Google form. We also will have a phone number. The website isn't quite up yet. Not, it's got one more bug in it before we can actually go public with it. But there'll be information there and links there for registration. But obviously, as we're getting more publicity out, we also will have the links as well. So right now, any questions that people have can come to me, and I'll make sure they get answered, and if people even want to start signing up, I'll be happy to do it. So I think those, oh, I know. In terms of people, registration, part of what we will ask them is, do you need childcare while your taxes are returning? Do you need a translator? Do you have a disability that we need to be prepared to address? So that kind of, that kind of information is part of what we'll ask for. So this is just a list of folks that are working with us. PATH Foundation has given us a little bit of money for operations. ARP is giving us the computers, the printers, the secure routers, all that sort of thing, as well as the training. So, that's it in a nutshell.
That's awesome.
That's taxes simplified, right?
If we could only get them that way.
That's a great service. So what, what do you think the most effective way to get the word out will be, and what can we do to help? Because it seems like to date the numbers, the numbers of people participating has been surprisingly low.
Well, I think there's a couple of issues. One is, first of all, it hasn't been available, and so people, it's just not top of mind. Another one is trust. So who are these people who are often doing free tax returns? Is this for real, is this a scam, whatever? So the communications about it and the availability, the more it can go through a trusted avenue. So as I mentioned before, we're working through the churches, we're working through a lot of these other nonprofits. You're welcome to, encouraged to, share the information with your constituents, let them know. You all have, in your districts, more than 30%, no, I'm sorry, there's one district that's a 28%, I think, households that basically are that ALIS group, that working poor group, okay? So the more communications you have with your constituents, the better. There'll be more in the media as we go along. Basically, we're using any way we can get it out there. Christine and I had a little conversation earlier about having a sort of a pre-tax event. You know, just come and find out how easy it is to get your taxes done free, not doing them at right then. But potentially, you know, here's what you need to bring, here's what you need to know, sorry we can't do yours, but whatever it is. So we'll think about that, whether people would actually participate in that. But the more publicity we can get, the better, and that's great. So I'm open to any suggestions you have about ways to get the word out, you know?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm just not sure what involvement the board would have, since we have no oversight over your group.
Really, the awareness to get the word out, to let people know it's there. The oversight really comes through the IRS.
Right, but...
Actually, I didn't mention, we actually can be, we probably will be audited, because we are a first-year site. So we will almost certainly be audited, and there is lots and lots of things we need to do in terms of operational compliance and all those kinds of things.
Right, but what I'm saying is, I don't know what the involvement of this board would be, because we have no oversight.
It's up to you personally, if you want to get the information to your constituents or other organizations, networks that you're involved in. So it's not so much a board responsibility, as it is, the board is a place that many people look to for information, and frankly, credible information.
I just said that, we have no oversight, so we have no ability to know whether it's credible. If you're dealing with the IRS, then it's strictly between you and the IRS, not this board.
I guess you could say...
Did I miss something?
No, I think I understand what you're saying, but I, all I'm really suggesting is that if you think, if you as an individual, not even formally as a board, if you think this is worthwhile, and you think it's trustworthy, you want to have more discussions about it, and you want to share it, that's great.
It may be, I just don't see where the board functions...
That's what I'm saying, the board doesn't have any official role, as far as I can say. I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll take every opportunity I can get to get the word out. Any other questions?
Thank you so very much.
Thank you so very much.
Good, thank you. Thanks a lot. Thanks for all you do.
All right. Next, we have Josh Roller with Robinson Farmer Cox in our audit.
It's a wonderful time of year.
Yes.
Right at the base, there's a pistol.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. As I was just introduced, my name is Josh Roller. I'm a partner with Robinson Farmer Cox. And we're here today to present the fiscal year '23 audit report. First, you should also have a three-page letter kind of with the audit report there. This is the standard communication required at the end of the audit. It kind of goes through different aspects of the audit, a few things. On the first page there, it talks about accounting estimates are integral part of the financial statements. The two largest estimates that go into the financials for you all would be the useful life of fixed assets, which drives the depreciation expense every year, as well as all the numbers coming from the pension, the VRS pension valuation and all the OPEV valuations there. The second page of that letter goes into a little bit more detail about how we had no disagreements with management on any issues, no difficulties in, in getting information from management. Also talks about management representation. To get the report finalized, we'll get a management representation letter. This letter states that management has provided everything we've asked for, is not holding anything back and kind of taking responsibility for the financials themselves. Now getting into the actual report, I'll just point your attention to a few different parts of the report. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, obviously. So starting on page one, page one through four, this is our independent auditor's report. This where we, this is where we are issuing a unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, the best opinion we can give you all. Flipping forward a few more pages here to page eight. Pages eight and 10 are your governmental funds. Page eight, exhibit three is your governmental funds balance sheet. And exhibit five, two pages forward, is your governmental funds revenues, expenses, changing fund balance for the year. On exhibit three there, the bottom section, the fund balance there, that's a lot more detailed than it has been in previous years. We've added where the fund balance is restricted for certain purposes, committed, assigned, et cetera. So that's also detailed in a note in the financials as well. I believe it's the 20, 26 as well. Kind of same, similar information, but in two different spots there. The few notes that I'll point your attention to on page 27. 27 is your capital asset note. So this is all your long-term assets, your land, buildings, equipment, et cetera. And then a few pages forward, 29. The bottom of page 29 is your debt note, your long-term obligation. This is where it shows your total outstanding debt at the end of the year, as well as your lease liabilities, your pension liabilities, and OPEV liabilities as well. Going forward a few pages, page 85. Page 85 is probably the most beneficial, most useful statement in this whole report. This is your general fund budgetary comparison schedule, lists out the, all the different revenues, expenditures of the general fund and kind of comparing them to the final budget numbers. On the, let's see, the middle of page 88 is your total revenues there. You can see the total revenues for general fund for the year were $23,47,846 compared to your final budget number of $24,351. So you had a surplus there of 1.3 million. On the other side of it, if you go to the bottom of page 90, middle of page 90, sorry. This is where it shows your total expenditures for the year in the general fund of $19,959,262 compared to your final budget numbers of 22 million. So under budget there as well. That doesn't factor in any kind of transfers in and out of the fund to other funds, which are detailed out below there. Flipping forward, page 139. This is our independent auditor's report over internal controls on financial reporting. We're not required and we don't give an opinion on the internal controls of the county. What we are required to assess those controls as part of our audit and we had no matters that need to be disclosed here, so no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies there. So a clean report there. Flipping forward two pages, page 141 is our independent auditor's report on federal compliance or uniform guidance is what governs that. Again, there we have a clean opinion, no matters of non-compliance to report on any of the federal programs that we've audited this year. I know that's a very quick kind of run through the whole report, but happy to answer any questions if you have now or if, obviously, if you need more time. Always open to kind of hop on a phone call or email, et cetera, that if you guys have additional questions.
Thanks, Jeremy. Really, you do a great job every year. And as I've said before, I, I would love to get this ahead of time.
Yeah.
So it's hard to ask much in-depth stuff here, but as we talked about before the meeting, I think we all can follow up and write in.
Yeah.
And that would all be posted, I guess, maybe to board docs so people know what we're asking. I just want to make sure that as we raise questions about our, our audited financial statement for the fiscal year, that, that it's, these questions are out in the public for people to understand where we might have concerns. And because we aren't receiving this until.
Yeah.
Effectively the day of our meeting, it's impossible for us to pose questions unless he were to come back, which is, might not be the best use of his time or.
But he could, he could come in person or be online and, or staff.
Okay.
Help answer those questions between now and whenever, next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so that's just a general point. I just want to make sure that we have the opportunity to, to study the financial statement and ask questions. I do have one question regarding table eight, which is on, page 137. I know I asked last year, I think it was last year, maybe the year before, about calculation of, of carrying capacity for debt. And table eight's interesting. I mean, I didn't do the math. It's got to, it's got to be a pretty easy calculation. Basically, it shows population, assessed value of, I guess, real property, and then our amount of outstanding bonded debt, which is now basically 10% of what it was in, you know, 2014, 10 years ago. My question to you is, from an audit, outside auditing perspective, when you look at this calculation of net bonded debt per capita, do you, with localities like ours, and I know you work in a lot of other jurisdictions, is there a bright line that, kind of like, is there a debt-to-equity kind of analysis or where you, where you become concerned about a locality's per capita?
If it starts to near 10% of the assessed value, that's when it becomes a, a, something to caution.
Okay.
That's kind of the, it's only for cities and towns within the state, but the state has a actual compliance requirement that cities, towns are not allowed to issue debt when it crosses over 10% of that assessed value.
So in our case, based on these assessed values in 2023, you're talking about like $200 million or?
Correct, yeah.
God help us.
Just, yeah, without having any other report in front of me, your total debt kind of per capita is on the extremely low side.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's an important note for people to see as we talk about courthouse construction or renovation because we're down, we're looking at $49, $49 per capita. Okay, but it, so.
Want to jump in real quick and say that this is on Bonnie's list of things to develop, some policies to bring to you to consider whether you want to put some bans on borrowing and how you want to handle that and, as a community, which is independent of, of what RFC.
I understand that. Okay. Great. Another, another question is, our fire levy board has been talking about very high level, hopefully not burdensome, standardization of financial record-keeping practices uniformly across all of our volunteer fire and rescue companies. And my question to you is, is that an area, considering you're involved in our fire company audits, is that an area where you would want to weigh in or could weigh in effectively to say how, as auditors, you want records kept at each of the companies?
Yeah, it's something that we have done similar type of engagements for not only just fire departments, but just, you know, nonprofits, et cetera, where we kind of come up with some policies. We would likely, probably, maybe even move it to another office just to kind of keep independent.
I see.
But we do have five offices in Virginia, so it would be something that we could likely have another office kind of take on that engagement side of it to kind of.
Yeah, I think it's just to make sure that if, if the fire levy board and our board ultimately say to the fire and rescue companies, you know, ideal, and I think they're all doing a really good job and many of them have migrated to QuickBooks, which I think simplifies everyone's life. They can give you an accountant's copy of their QuickBooks file and they're done.
Right.
But to the extent that we just, you know, want to ensure efficiency and solid, solid record-keeping across the board, it seems to me that it might make sense to at least let you see what our fire levy board is recommending and maybe offer comment in that regard.
Yeah.
And again, we're talking very high level, hopefully not burdensome.
Yeah.
Requirements. So we may be back in touch with you on that. And then speaking of fire and rescue companies, our favorite topic, which we talked about down in Bath County recently, if you could just give us a status update on these delayed audits of all the fire and rescue companies, where we stand, what we can expect, and where we are in terms of fiscal year completion.
So I spoke with the, the other partner that runs those audits this morning to kind of get a quick update in case this question came up. So of the 22 audits, let's see, one, two. Two of those are waiting on forms from the actual fire department management or whoever's kind of in charge of signing rep letters, et cetera. There's one that we're missing info. I don't have detail exactly on what we're missing for that. There's one where we're missing information for multiple months. And then there's another one that's, the review part is in process. Kind of the audit field work has been done by staff and it's now to the point where it's in review.
Okay. And, and Gary just waited.
These are calendar year 21 as well.
And the 21, I have that, one of them was recently finalized. And then the other two are kind of just awaiting finalization. I don't know if I have great detail of exactly what we're missing on those, but I can check on that.
So unlike us, their fiscal years correspond with the calendar year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and obviously, very, very long in the tooth here, so. Our conversations with RFC have basically been, and, and other accounting firms, they can't find accountants. And they're struggling. It doesn't mean that we don't want to be high on the list and, and we keep trying to push, but there needs to be resources available to do that. I don't know what more we can do other than squeak a lot.
That would be my question. If you're missing information, is there anything we can do?
Yeah.
Oh, we do, the different letters will act as a go-between to try to get that done.
And I'll try to go with the other partner who runs those this afternoon, try to see if we can get a comprehensive list of missing information, what we need for each one, each year to get them finalized and get them moved on.
That'd be great.
So I'll work on that.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
The surety bond note, you corrected it for me at least, but I think you missed Supervisor Carney.
Mr. Carney said that. Yeah, so we, we have that information and so we can get that note corrected.
Okay. Note 19, yeah, we can get that updated.
Thank you to you and to our schools for working with us to get a clean bill of health to our staff and constitutional officers for all their hard work, too.
Absolutely.
Thanks a lot.
Yep, thank you all for having me.
All right. We're moving into public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand, be recognized, and when you come up, give us your name and your district. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Jock Nash. I'm here with my wife, Yoko. We're in the Hampton District. In 2014, I moved out here. And the first thing they told me, if you're going to live in Rappahannock, you've got to have a pickup truck, a pocket knife, a dog, and a wife. I didn't have a wife. So fix that real quick. We got the county attorney, Demarius, and we went to the Corner Cafe for our wedding breakfast. The other thing that Yoko and I decided to do in 2014 is to get to know the county. We did it by going to Washington Council meetings, Board of Supervisors meetings, BCA meetings, and getting to know the people that were running our county. During that, I met Ron Frazier and his wife, beautiful wife. Having been an attorney on the Senate Judiciary Committee, I was familiar with committees, commissions, and so on and so forth. And I want to say here that one person I have a great deal of respect for, I'm not going to say anything about anybody else, is Ron Frazier. I want to thank him for his years of service to this county, for being always available, and for, for doing what my boss used to say, always do your homework, be on time, and don't bluff. And that's Ron Frazier. He's a patriot, he's courageous, and my wife and I sincerely respect him and thank him for all of his service.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Yokovarsky, Hampton District, as Jock said, yes. Wanted to thank Mr. Frazier for all the long services and also listening and bringing up the voices of, should I say, silent voices of the county. We don't even live in his county, his district, but we really appreciate what Mr. Frazier had brought up to the board. So wanted to thank you. Another note has, all of you have seen the RAC's Christmas play? If you haven't, there will be three more days this week, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Please go have a look. This is mostly all children with just one adult in the main cast. And it's really a fun, not very long, little over an hour maybe, a very fun play and there are a lot of laughters. Actually, the Mad Rap had a great review about that. So please, please go watch the show on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And it's all cast, mostly main characters are children, there was one adult. And this courageous lady was on the stage after cracking two ribs on her back. So she's been playing in pain, but she's been great. So please go have a, go pay attention and.
Thank you, thank you.
Go see the play, thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else had a hand up over here, I think?
I wanted to address Ron on his last day here.
Will you give us your name and your district, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Roy Ellis, Castleton. And I just want to thank you for your service, Ron, almost like a long tenure group. And you got a lot of options now on what to do. I was thinking, one thing you might want to do is run for president and use your conservative principles, try and fix our $33 trillion debt. Otherwise, you might do something like sit home and watch CNN on our new fest, Lightning Fest, fiber optic internet. But otherwise, Ron, just want to say thank you for your time and service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hold applause, please. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Ron McElloch.
Ron McIllogh, Jackson District. I just want to make a brief comment on the agreement that you're going to be looking at with Culpeper on the landfill for residents of Culpeper. And looking at it, we have lots of needs in this county, it appears to me, but one of them is some trash. And I I don't quite understand why we want to institute this agreement, even though it's, you know, it is, they are going to be paying for it. But with the development that's taking place on that end of our end of the county, it's it could create a huge potential that we don't want to deal with. And quite honestly, with what Culpeper is allowing to take place there, it's time for them to step up and put a transfer station or something like that at that end of the county to service those people. But I don't think it's an obligation that we as a county should be taking on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Yes.
Deacon Stonewall District. I want to echo Mr. Nash, Mr. Ellis's comment about our gratitude for your service, Mr. Fraser. And in this particular board, I feel like you've been swimming upstream for the last four years. I expect it will go from a three to two majority to a four to one. I don't think there'll be any change in that. From this side of the rail, I've never seen such rancor and such discord, not caused by you, but by received by you, essentially. The disrespect from members of this board towards this man who's served this county for almost 30 years tirelessly, faithfully. Some people have described him as a as a budget hawk, and we're going to miss that. But I'm going to encourage you to come on this side of the rail, where they will have to listen to you as a citizen. Come aboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. Thanks. I just wanted to distribute some happy news. I know a lot of times people have talked about landlines, and I hadn't heard anybody saying anything for quite a while. I did have my landline run away for a while. So I called Bright Speed finally. They were absolutely wonderful. The tech came like the next day, which was amazing. The whole way of contacting them and dealing with them and everything was absolutely fantastic. So for some reason, I hope I'm hoping everybody else has a similar experience. They didn't have to redo a line or anything. It was just somebody had nibbled on one of those posts somewhere. So they they found that right away, and he was absolutely lovely to talk to. So I think that's a step forward. The other thing, we are coming into the new year. And while a lot of people talk about New Year's resolutions, I'm not a proponent of that. I I prefer to just set goals as we go along the way. And I would like one of our goals going forward is to join together as a county, as a community, to support our company for as they're going through some times. I've talked to different people, and I think a lot of people are trying their best to make it a viable, good company. There's been some bad blood, but I think that can be overcome with people who've been with the company for a while and people who are new to get together and just have conversations. I truly think it'll be a wonderful thing. As for Mr. Fraser leaving, I know my husband, John, and I wish him well fishing and hunting because I think the beauties of Rappahannock are fantastic. So I think he might enjoy that kind of peace and tranquility for a while. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. I'm Margaret Vaughn from the Piedmont District, not in Mr. Fraser's district either, but I had the pleasure of taking minutes for the broadband authority for quite some time, in which Mr. Fraser was an active participant. And I came during that period of service as the recording secretary to really appreciate the insights and the questions that Mr. Fraser had for the broadband authority, for the community. And because I would listen to the recording of the meetings as I would type up the minutes, I would found myself looking forward to what questions Mr. Fraser would ask. They were thoughtful. They were thought provoking. They were reflected a degree of insight into the issues, not just for the broadband authority, but for the county as a whole. And I'm hopeful going forward, Mr. Fraser, that you won't stop feeling as though you have a place to address these questions to the county, to the Board of Supervisors now as a as a citizen from this side of the of the bench, because you have very good questions to ask and from your experience. I know I appreciated working with you, and I hope you'll still feel you have a place to contribute to this community going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Sam Paulback from Wakefield District. I've known Mr. Fraser for a few years now, worked with him on a couple of different things. You know, the county's losing a walking Google when he leaves because he knows an answer to just about every problem that you can come up with when you start talking about things in the county or statewide, even Supreme Court rulings and stuff. You know, he's been a great access, and I'd like to thank you for your time here and hope you enjoy your time off because you'll be back.
I did not pay him to say anything.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I think I could raise this up. John Capielli, Hampton District. One of the things I heard, I haven't seen the report either because it was only issued just recently about the budget. The, I was just sitting here, that document that you have.
It's audited.
Your your financial audit, sorry. Obviously, you guys have done a great job in the fact that you have $1.9 million as a surplus. And I hope that continues. Mr. Fraser, even though we don't get along with everything or have the exact same ideas or directions that we go in, thank you for your time. And I, as I said to you before, I hope that you don't leave and not bring the, as they call institutional knowledge of all the things like about buying the property in the back five years ago, 10 years ago, many years ago for a future courthouse. I hope that information does not disappear. You're the only one that has it. The rest of the people need it. That was that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Not seeing any else in the courtroom since we haven't discussed the online public comment. I'm going to go ahead and open the comment on Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized by raising your Zoom hand, and we'll hear from you once you give your name and your district. All right, not seeing any hands raised on Zoom. I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I wonder if we could just take a.
Recese.
Very briefly.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, recess.
Two.
3:09. And we're a consent agenda.
I wondered if we should pull out the budget development calendar for January.
It's probably a wise move.
Adopt that January 3rd, unless there's a compelling reason to adopt it now.
Is January too late for resetting it?
I don't know. Why don't you, if you, why don't you pull it off the consent agenda, then you can discuss it. And it's.
Okay.
I would make a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of the fiscal year 2025 budget development calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Development calendar.
I would suggest that we delay adopting this until the January Board of Supervisors regularly scheduled meeting.
Do we normally adopt in December?
You have the last couple of years.
But there's no reason. Or is there?
No, as long as we can provide FOIA notice in a reasonable amount of time, then that's fine. This is really a forecast for staff, both here and at the schools, to understand what's coming, how everything's going to be woven together. The schools did, school board did adopt a calendar, which is integrated into this calendar. So to the extent that there's one joint meeting, I think shown, doesn't work for the Board of Supervisors, and we'll just circle back with them and get that ironed out.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, when when the board meets is completely up to when the board wants to meet.
And I would just say, I don't know the disposition of my other, of the other board members, but I personally prefer them morning meetings for budget sessions. That 1:00 PM really cuts right in the middle of the day for me. I'd rather do the 10 o'clock sessions like we used to.
It's like calculus class in college. You'd get it out of the way.
I'd like to have just enough coffee that, you know, it goes well and then have the rest of the day to enjoy.
I can tell you why I started showing them at 1:00 is because if we start at 10:00, then it comes noon, and we're basically, we're done because we've run into lunch. And now we've got two, got two hours in. If that's all the board wants to meet is two hours, then we'll go into it.
I think we're, we weren't, I felt last time pretty efficiently and in little bursts.
I think being done at noon is a beautiful thing. But if it's not the inclination of the board to do the 10 to 12 sessions, I think personally, I think we work better in small bites. I think if you if you have a three or four hour budget meeting, it's not going to be terribly productive, in my opinion. I'd much rather do multiple short meetings than than long meetings.
Would 9:00 be too early?
I don't have a problem with 9:00. I think we used to do 9:00 or 10:00, I can't remember, but that's my personal preference. But, you know, it's the, we work as a board, and if you all prefer to keep afternoons, we certainly have done it before. But the mornings work better for me.
And I appreciate the discussion now because that would help us, you know, go back to the meeting spaces, confirm availability at a 9:00 slot, if that is kind of generally what the board would like to do and have the calendar updated for you at your next meeting.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with 9:00.
I mean, I just, I just, I think I'm I'm more productive in the mornings personally, and I I just think it's it's nice to get them done.
I'm good with 9:00.
Okay, so what do we have to decide today, I guess, is the question.
Because we're not sure of availability of spaces, we'll just take away this general consensus that you want staff to review the schedule and try to shift meetings to 9:00 where we can find a space to meet. And we'll bring that back at the next meeting for adoption.
And you don't have any meeting scheduled for Valentine's Day or my anniversary this year.
Thank you.
Which is a real disappointment.
There is an interest, you know, these meetings fall together in an interesting way and with weekends and everything. And so the calendar has benefited us this year in that regard.
Sounds good. Thank you, Gary.
All right. Any other discussion on that? We're good? Okay. Moving into appointments. Appointments to the Library Board of Trustees.
Madam Chair, if I could kind of take a lead on that for a few moments. We had four applicants, and we don't normally have such a large number of applicants for one position. And I I encourage this type of thing, you know, moving forward. I hope that the only one can be selected today, but I I hope that whoever is not selected would keep their name out there in circulation for a later appointment. But in in looking at the list of names and the in the backgrounds, the experience, it's it's kind of tough. But I think when I look at Ms. Napier, who who put in her application, she's from Jackson District. And we don't have that many Jackson District people that that apply as a rule. We usually only have one during every cycle. And all these others, we've got, we've already got two people from Hampton, two people from Piedmont, and the applicants are from Hampton, Piedmont, and Stonewall, except for Ms. Napier. So I would like to put her name forward to be appointed in this vacancy.
All right. Any continuing discussion?
Well, if that's if that's a motion, I'll second it.
That's that's a motion, I'm sorry.
And I assume the motion the motion is to appoint effective January 1:00 with a term ending December 31, 2027.
Yes, sir. According to the ad that we ran.
And and I would just say, I'm always so grateful that we have a wealth of wonderful applicants when we have these openings on our board. I spoke into Ms. Cable and just indicated that, you know, we do have multiple representatives very capably serving the Piedmont District at this time on the library board. So I do feel like it is good to have multiple representatives from each district whenever we have applicants that can that can fulfill those duties, as it seems we do today. And I would also like to thank Ms. Miller for putting her name forward, Demaris Miller, because I know she has come and spoken to this board on multiple occasions about concerns at the library. And it was very gratifying to see that she had submitted an application and continues to take an active interest in the library.
I I'll just I'll just echo the comments of Ms. Smith and Mr. Fraser. And as I just spoke to Ms. Napier, is that, am I pronouncing that correctly? Obviously, her resume is extensive, and she has a law degree among other things. And what I told her, whoever we appoint to this, this is really an embarrassment of riches. We've got four great applicants, including Ms. Miller, Mr. Rader, and Ms. Cable. And I think that it's, to Mr. Fraser's point, it's it's something we should encourage because this level of citizen involvement, at least in recent years, is almost without precedent. And I hope that whoever's appointed, others who've stepped up so willingly should remain in the mix for other possible appointments in local government because these are all very talented people. I think I think Ms. Napier's an excellent applicant, and I think Ms. Cable also stands out with a child in the school system and is a small business owner who really is a part of the heart and soul of our business, local business community, working within the county, a business that she started. And I think that kind of entrepreneurship is also brings a valuable perspective to the board. So it's, for me, it's, I mean, it's it's really a tough decision because we've got great people. And I don't know, just looking at the terms, I don't know if we could quickly review.
There will be four seats up at December 31, 2024.
Okay.
Some of those individuals might be interested in reappointment. They they might not. So there there will be many, there will likely be more than one opening next year.
But this is a a board that has term limits. Is that correct?
There is no, there are no term limits. Four-year terms, and it is staggered to the extent, of course, with there being nine members and one county representative, you couldn't have even representation from the five districts.
So I believe I believe that if I'm not mistaken, that Ms. Disarno, who is one of my constituents, it's my understanding she'll be moving. And I don't know.
I'm not sure when. If that happens within the year, then that seat will come open.
Okay, so if if she were to move out of the county, then then her seat would become open at that time.
Right.
And and you cannot continue to serve once you leave the county.
Um, I can't say that definitively without looking at.
Mr. Freytek, I think, on the super authority, wants to move to.
Oh, right. But that's a different authority, different state codes, different local code.
Well, silly me. Why would I think that was that easy?
But it's embedded in the county ordinance, which is really special.
Yeah, they're both in the county ordinance and handled differently and have different state code sections that guide them, so.
Okay. And then Ms. Schumate also is a constituent of mine, has been very active, and I'll speak with her about her continued interest since she's up in 2024. Ms. Peterson, Piedmont. I mean, it's a great group of people with. Ms. Peterson, Piedmont. I mean, it's a great group of people with some exciting things on the horizon. And I think to have all these fantastic applications is great. And I don't know how to say this any differently than if you don't receive this appointment today, please come back shortly because there should be a seat for you.
Absolutely.
And I would like to echo the same thing. There's just, you know, I've got a constituent on here, Mr. Frank Rader, who's put his application in, and Frank is a great guy. And there's just, we've got four applications here for one position. And Mr. Frazier, I agree with you that should we be so lucky to get four great applications, you know, every time we have an appointment come up?
Yep.
And I really had to sort of struggle with this just because we have so many capable people applying for it. So I'd like to, you know, just echo what Mr. Whitson said, that if for some reason you do not get this today, there will be other positions open. But I do think it's an important position for sure. And, you know, I think we all, I know personally that with having small children who use the library all the time, it is such a huge asset to our county, and it's one of the most valuable things we have as a society, is a free and open library. So it's very important to me. Yeah.
I think we're all in agreement that this is a very important position to fill, given the library and the, the potential changes that they would like to make at some point. It's good to have people that are very engaged and have time and energy. It is wonderful to see so many people on this that have applied. But you're right, Mr. Whitson, there's four 2024 or current members that are going to expire. So we have plenty of room, and I hope everyone will come back that applied that does, does not get the position as of today. So with that, do we want any other further discussion? We have a motion and a second. No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
It passes. All right. Appointments to the Rep. Hennet County Broadband Authority?
Yes, with Mr. Frazier moving off the Board of Supervisors. According to the bylaws, he'll be moving off the broadband authority. I place this on the agenda as an opportunity for the board to act if it was appropriate time to do so. Otherwise, it can be done in January. And Mr. Frazier also pointed out, there's another separate of this, but I'll mention it now while you're in appointments. Virginia Career Works Piedmont position that he sits on, that will have to be on the January agenda as well. So not sure where we stand. I know in communication with Comer, of course, she could, as an incoming board member, she could be appointed. Or a citizen could be appointed because up to two citizens, up to new two non-Board of Supervisors members can be appointed, and there's currently one in this bond. So there is an option on how that goes. So.
Just wondering if it makes sense to table until January or what?
Well, if we want to make this appointment in January, we have to advertise for it now.
Yeah, if we want to put it something in the newspaper, absolutely.
Well, I mean, we have Ms. Comer here. Why don't we just ask her if her intention is to, is to take the seat or, or not?
Sure.
I think, I mean, I think the decision is, I think, I think we should table this to January, basically.
Well, I'm not asking for a vote. I'm just saying.
You're just trying to figure out if.
The prospective person to fill the slot is here. We should find out if, you know, we shouldn't leave it unfilled if we know that it needs to be filled.
And if you're going to not fill it with the supervisor, then we need to put it in the paper.
That's correct.
Basically, you want to know, paper or no paper?
I think we, well, I think it's our decision, and I think we should advertise it.
Okay.
That's my motion.
I don't understand why we'd spend money to advertise it if the supervisor wants to fill it.
Because supervisor like Comer is not on our board currently, and I think we're making this decision. So to me, the only decision we can make is whether or not to advertise and not knowing her intentions. And she's not a board member. I think we advertise it.
I'm not asking for her to have a vote. I'm just saying she, that she has a voice and she's sitting in the gallery. I don't understand why we can't just speak to each other. This is very similar to when I was brought on board and Gary was being hired, and there was a big kerfuffle about whether I could even be in the meeting or not. And I thank God every day that Ron Frazier was in that meeting and said Christine can attend. She doesn't have a vote. Of course, she's not a sworn in board member yet, but she certainly has a voice and can talk about how she feels about things.
Which was the same courtesy that had been extended to me.
Okay. Fair enough. I didn't know.
Yeah, I didn't either. Um, Ms. Comer?
Why won't you advertise the paper?
Thank you.
So I have a motion. I don't think it gathered a second. I don't know that it requires a motion in it to advertise. We can just do that. But if there is a motion and a second and a vote, then I'll be compelled to do it.
I, I move that we advertise for the vacancy on the broadband authority.
I second that motion.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Stay.
Thank you. All right. Moving into old business.
The Career Works position has to be an elected member of this body.
Right, so that won't be advertised.
And that's just an appointment at the organizational meeting?
It's not typically in the organizational documents. And I've sent an email to the organization, asked them to get me a one pager to help the board understand exactly the, of the requirements and what the position is for. And they said they would do that.
All right. Going into public input methods. Mr. Whitson, I think the last meeting.
So at the last meeting, there was this discussion of whether or not the board should receive remote input for public comment, public hearings. Staff's position, myself and county attorney, that it's dangerous to do so because in an open forum, you cannot cut people off. And they are, they can say anything they want. That's one level of effort to do that if they happen to find your online URL and are anonymous. And it's another thing if they're in the room. And are, can say whatever they want at that mic, but they have to be here. And other localities have found that, that they've been burdened with trying to figure out what to do with outbursts through remote participation and found that they can't do anything other than disallow it or hear whatever comes through the system.
So, I mean, I can't remember a time that we've ever had that happen.
But we've only been doing it since COVID.
Okay, so we're using Zoom as a platform because of COVID, because we needed a way to hold board meetings remotely. So we've been, and I don't, I'm not a tech person, not even close. But my question is, when you look at other localities around the Commonwealth and Chordana, and I have a colleague down in Augusta County, maybe, I'm thinking Pam, yeah. A counterpart in Augusta County, I think what they do, and I don't know if this, this would make sense, is they live stream meetings so that people can view the meetings from home. And what, to me, that would seem to do, and again, I don't know how we would accomplish that. The Zoom platform really is only in place, as far as I'm concerned, because we were holding meetings via Zoom. And it's convenient because we can keep using it and then turn off or mute everybody and then adopt a policy and say, oh, well, even though normally in Zoom you can like raise your hand, we're no longer going to allow you to do that. I think it's kind of a, a strange mixed bag that we would continue to use Zoom as a platform and then deny people the opportunity to actually use Zoom as it's intended. And so to that end, I wonder if we could at least explore how we livestream, we might livestream meetings. And that obviates the need, I think, for any, any corresponding policy. Basically says, hey, we want people at home to be able to observe what local government's up to. And should you want to comment or provide input, you communicate in writing or attend a meeting physically. Because I think right now, we, we have a platform that invites comment by, by the very nature of this, of, of the Zoom software. And I think it is odd to then say, but we're not going to use it for that purpose.
The newspaper used to livestream these meetings. It's a, and I think it became a
Technology?
Technology data problem. Of course, you've got the expert sitting over there.
Yeah, but I, I mean, that's, I just don't want to create a monster and then.
I, I would rather not stand up our own video and do all that.
I understand that.
I don't want to do that, and I don't want to create those records and.
So what I would, what I, I'll just, to move this along, I'll just put forward a motion.
Wait, wait, let's not do the motion again. We're always doing motions and then have to walk back from that before we even talk about the thing. Why can't we just talk about this? I, I kind of agree with you. On one hand, we haven't had any problems. I think we're trying to create a solution for something that we haven't had a problem for yet. I know the city of Charlottesville has had issues down there, but we haven't had one that I know of. And the chair always requires whether you stand here in person or whether you're on Zoom to identify who you are and where you live. And then, you know, just like you can ask someone to sit down because they're out of order here, I don't know why you couldn't mute them electronically.
I, I think what we've found, and Mr. Goff has found in an open public forum, you can't ask them to stop their comments unless it's a uniform set of minutes or something like that.
Now, why don't we just impose a three to five minute, or just make it five minutes? Make a five-minute cutoff for everybody in person.
I mean, we do try five. Sometimes it's three if it's a roomful.
Then I think really by the time it gets to five, most folks are working on wrapping it up anyway.
I just think it's the concern of the what-if happens. If you've got somebody in minute one using profanity or whatever, and we're being told First Amendment, you can't shut that down.
Right.
Well, how, how would you handle it if they were standing here?
It would happen live in person.
It's just a taller bar to, people are less likely to come here and do that.
In person.
In person. And, and, you know, I, my ears are conditioned to a lot of things. I can hear just about anything. And if the board and the community want to have that opportunity as well, that's fine. Staff's just bringing this as what others have seen, yes, Charlottesville, but other places in the state and the country as well. We started this Zoom thing because of the pandemic. We held on to it because it is convenient to the citizens to be able to kind of check in and see what the board is doing along the way. Maybe gauge whether they want to leave their house and come to the meeting or, or, or whatever. They can watch the video after the fact that the news is, is doing. And if you told me today that you didn't want to, we didn't want to do Zoom anymore, I'd be happy with that, too.
I was very happy at the thought of walking away from Zoom when you first brought it up. But I, I have to say, in retrospect, there are times that the weather's bad or folks are out of town or a lot of things can come up. But that doesn't mean that they don't still feel strongly about what's on the agenda.
We have the press on right now because, you know, they probably couldn't be here for some reason.
Right. So, I mean, I, I think for the, for the amount of work we put into it, it is a, a great service to provide, and it's, and it's not overly cumbersome in the course of the meeting.
Doing this is easy, relatively speaking. Doing what he was doing before and broadcasting live and trying to keep track of that, that's not easy. And which is why the paper stopped and just moved to the archive recording that's uploaded to YouTube. Many localities do kind of cross-feed their Zoom meeting to YouTube. I don't know the value for that, particularly when the newspapers know what they're doing.
I think for me, so far, Zoom has been an incredible tool for the public when they're stuck at home. And I think that if somebody calls in and starts saying things that are inappropriate, I feel like we can all absorb that in our own way, and then we can fix the rule.
If it happens.
If it happens. But until now, it hasn't happened. It's an unlikely chance, I think, that it will happen. And I do think that this provides a service for people in the county to be able to follow along at home and then call in. That's what I think.
A lot of elderly people say that they had to quit coming to meetings at night because it, you know, and I, I understand that. I do. The, the lights, people try to blind you with their headlights now. I mean, they've got mega lights out there.
All right, so what I'm hearing is keep it the way it is and we'll deal with it if something happens.
Right, so right now, there's, I'm not aware of any vote that really led to us doing what we're doing. We just kind of did it out of necessity. So if there is a board position that you want to take, you can do that, or you can just let staff do what we're doing.
Okay.
I think it's a valuable service.
All right, let's move on to refuse and recycling center.
Yes, this is regarding local use. Was mentioned during the public comment period. Since the, the board made the decision to endorse a plan to require stickers at the refuse and recycling centers to validate use. So county citizens and residents would receive a free sticker that will serve for multiple years. And then with very limited exceptions, including members of volunteer fire and rescue companies who might live outside the company but serve here, they would get a free sticker as well. Everybody else would be prohibited from using our refuse and recycling centers because it's, there are a lot of dollars involved in managing waste and recycles. So we started immediately to hear from Culpeper citizens who had used the facility for 30 years or whatever it was. And we suggested they might want to talk to their county leaders, discuss that. Before we even went anywhere near this, I did have preliminary discussions with Culpeper staff. And at that time, they thought, they didn't really feel like they needed to do anything. And they said that, you know, the Rep. Hennet County would, could sell access to their staff or to their residents if we wanted to. And I said, well, I'm not really interested in that administrative burden. So we're not, you know, why would, why would we take that burden on? The, the voices grew louder in Culpeper to their board members and, and county administration. And so the, that team, the administration came to me asking if there maybe there was a way to, to move forward where Culpeper citizens could use our facilities on a fee basis. And we bounced back and forth a few ideas and landed on one wherein Culpeper staff, county staff, would administer a process to sell annual stickers to their citizens who want to pay to use the Amosville or Flatwood Center. And, and then it looks like from the presentation that will be made to the Culpeper Board tomorrow that the Culpeper County might subsidize the cost for their citizens. So the citizens might pay half and the local government might pay half. So that's where we are right now, that if, doing the background data for our staff, for our operational costs that have to do with waste hauling and disposal and recyclables as well as other operational costs at the center. It comes down to about $28 a month for a household for trash. And we extend that out to annual costs, and that's, I think, $336. So our recommendation right now would be, if you want to move forward and allow Culpeper citizens or others to use the center, that Culpeper staff go ahead and administer a program, sell stickers for $336 a month, remit a year, remit that to Rep. Hennet County in some routine cycle, and their citizens can do it. Important in this are a few items, like how do we reevaluate this every year? Yeah, are we, I doubt we'll be overwhelmed any more than we are today because not everybody's going to do this. People are going to opt to have curbside collection or drive to the Culpeper facility as opposed to our facility if they're kind of in the middle, and they came to ours because it was convenient for them for whatever reason. So we definitely want to make sure we can get out anytime we want to get out on an annual cycle. And we want to talk about how do we reevaluate the pricing going forward? And I would recommend we just do the way we did this time, which is look at our actual costs and, and, you know, do the calculations and, and basically attempt to break even. Our waste costs would be covered, our staff costs would be extra revenue for us because we're not adding any staff costs.
Do we have any idea how many people the Culpeper folks heard from? How many anticipated?
I don't have that information, but the attendance at the Amosville site suggests that maybe half of the people using that center are from Culpeper. And if you look at census information, the nearest three census blocks comprise about 5,000, a population of 5,000 people is, or is the entire county. a population of 5,000 people is, or is the entire county of Rep. Hennett, 7,400.
Is there any way to differentiate those stickers from the stickers we're already getting out?
Yes, yes. So our stickers are county sealed for Rep. Hennett County. Those will be valid for multiple years. Culpeper would have a sticker that is valid for only one year at a time, and they would have to buy a new sticker. So every January or July, we haven't yet figured that out, they would have to go to Culpeper, wherever administration or refuse, whoever administers it for that, for that county, and buy a new sticker. And so our staff would know that the 2024 sticker looks like this as opposed to the 2025 stickers looks something different. And that would track how we would get our new revenue every year. And whether they would pay us quarterly or monthly or annually or however that.
How does all of this affect our citizens, let's say, from Sperryville or Boston that have been dumping at?
Great question, right? And that came up when the board and staff, you know, decided to implement the sticker program. What about those folks who live in Scrabble or wherever? And when I talked to Culpeper staff at that time, and if you looked on their website, they're technically not allowed to go there anyway right now. But what I was told is, you know, it's not a lot of people and they're probably not going to be checking. That might change if we enter a program like this where there might be this similar expenditure on people. And then this board might have a, a thought to subsidize that at some point in time in the future if our citizens are buying their, the same annual sticker and just it's allowed to be used at Culpeper.
I've used it just to try it, but not the last, I don't know, six months or more. But I mean, I think they limit you to like five bags, residential trash. Anything after that becomes, I guess, a pay issue.
It's interesting in my conversations with their staff, they have a bigger issue at Lingam, at their other site with Orange County people coming in, and they've been working our issues down there. So they completely understand the situation. But as a public comment said, you don't have to do this. But, you know, it's not like we trip over the county line when we drive or walk down to 11. And, you know, they're all just citizens of the region. When we can have successful regional programs, probably saves money in the long run. And it would work for some period of time. And at some point in time, it might not make sense anymore. And it would probably require Culpeper to invest capital, you know, infrastructure in their, their community.
At least this way we'll have an idea of how many people get the stickers each year. And right now, we're just, as far as I know anyway, pretty much guessing who's coming in. People from Faukeer right here come in as well.
And so there's nothing to say that Culpeper wouldn't sell the Faukeer citizen a sticker, and we haven't worked that out. But I don't think they would subsidize it. Right, so.
Well, and for, if I was on the board in Culpeper, I would look toward these numbers to guide, as some have said, whether or not we needed to open our own station down there, which they probably will need to do sooner than later.
And what I didn't do, and I did send the board some more detailed financial information. I didn't, I didn't try to recover any of our capital on our equipment. And, and that's because we would buy the same equipment whether they're involved or not. And if they said no, we'd still have that. Whereas staff, I am recognizing staff time.
So Clevinger's Corner, imagine that they have some kind of, let's just imagine that they have some kind of trash pickup that everybody there, the 700 houses, 2.25 times 700, those people want to pay for whatever onsite. Now imagine that we have all those people wanting to dump their couches at Amosville.
Sure, yeah.
So if we have like a big uptick in people wanting to dump that kind of construction, that kind of stuff, does that run into a problem for us or is it still going to be okay?
Well, I mean, I think we have all that now.
You mean with the current?
Not, not with the current bill, right? So, but going forward, it's something we'll have to track. And if his vehicles come in and they have this Culpeper sticker and there's, you know, vehicle after vehicle with, with couches, then, you know, that's going to be a lot of input towards we're not charging enough or this is just not working anymore. And if we enter something like this, so there's no guarantee to Culpeper that we're going to do it for multiple years. But I do think if we do this, it is responsible for us to give Culpeper some advance notice to, like we did this time, to say, hey, this isn't working out. You need to start planning, you know, working on Plan B. And people will have to drive the 30 some odd minutes down to the 522 site.
And what if the scenario is that Culpeper rolls this out and then all of a sudden they just get swamped with people who want it? Is that an issue?
That's just revenue for us, and I can't imagine it's more people than are using the facility now. Without a sticker and without paying. The cost is maybe a little bit less than curbside collection, private curbside collection. But once it's subsidized, it would be significant, you know, half price of what they could go to one of the locally available commercial vendors to get the big tote and bin and the driveway. And so I think a number of them will, will do this. And if it's, you know, $336 a year, it could easily be 1,000 permits. That multiplication works out to some bigger numbers.
It's a nice revenue stream. I don't, I don't see how else we would track it.
Yeah. So before, my thought was we're just going to cut them off cold turkey and then we're going to see what happens to the waste stream. And then we can, we can negotiate about, well, Culpeper can provide a lump sum manually to cover. But this, this is kind of a cut to fit to whatever the actual cost is. And we'll say now that I have opened up some discussions with Warren County because there's a lot of Chester Gap people would love to be able to go there. And so trying to think about, once we get this ironed out, if you do this or this methodology makes sense, then we can talk about this methodology with them. And so some of this revenue can help our, help us maybe subsidize our citizens in Warren or, or back to Culpeper.
Yeah.
Anything you needed on that?
So I just wanted to give you an update. I would like to be authorized to enter an agreement. If you want to, if you want to define any of these bullet points or you just want to allow staff to work it out. So there's some of those things that aren't ironed out yet, or whether the annual cycle would be calendar, fiscal year. How would we, would handle a cost setting methodology for future years? How, how would, when Culpeper would pay us and how we would audit their work? Whether there's any standards for the sticker display that you want to be involved with? How you, we want to be involved with getting the word out? And then the term of the agreement, which I would strongly recommend be annual with opportunity for renewal. Basically annual with a renewal, with an updated price and an opt-out. But if you want to identify specifics for any of those, you can let me know within a motion to authorize me to execute an agreement. And Culpeper would love to get this done before January 1, which is the current stated date when they're no longer, their citizens are no longer coming in.
I can put forth a motion that we authorize the county administrator to continue working with his staff in Culpeper to, to iron out this problem. And I think it ought to be, the cycle probably ought to coincide with our budget cycle, June through July, unless you have.
Bonnie's shaking her head, so.
Better with that. Okay. Sometimes I'm right.
Yeah, it's, it would be awkward on how we handle this step in period, and they might sell a half-year sticker or something.
Unless you need anything else, I guess that's the motion.
So am I authorized to execute an agreement as long as it includes the $28 a month and fiscal year?
It's specified here, yes.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
So Culpeper Board will be looking at this tomorrow. Their Public Works Committee has recommended it to their full board.
Thank you for that effort. New commercial activity.
Sure. Thank you. So traffic and parking and deliveries around the Inn of Little Washington continue to be an issue. I did have an opportunity to talk at some length with Patrick O'Connell, who owns the Inn of Little Washington, to express my concern that the, this project out on 211, which I understood would eventually absorb a lot of staff parking in town and also be the site for deliveries of, of dry and fresh goods that would relieve Main Street in particular of truck traffic. He said, while that remains the intent, that is, you know, it's taken longer than anticipated. But he reassured me that he shares our ultimate objective of making sure that the town, the town flows and that as much parking is moved out of the town as possible. So I think we're headed in the right direction. The 211 property, according to Patrick O'Connell, is going to be used for employee parking. And that, the, the new storage facility that we can see opposite the Quickie Mart, that is actively now being used to take deliveries. I noted to him that just the other day, there was a large truck right in Main Street. We also have employees and pedestrians kind of wandering back and forth. So my next step is to work with Town Council and then also with the Inn's management team, as I mentioned before, to stripe some no parking areas and fire hydrant areas around the inn, just to make it safe for everyone. And possibly maybe even some crosswalks in the block between Harris Hollow Road and, and Warren Avenue. So it's, it's definitely an ongoing issue. But I, I have been assured by the owner that he shares our goal and the Town Council's goal, making sure that it's safe and not congested. I think we're headed in the right direction, but there's some now practical steps we'll need to take with VDOT to ensure safe and legal parking and pedestrian movement. I guess I'll just raise it here in the same context because it relates to increased traffic in, in the town of Washington. I ran into the mayor, Mayor Whited yesterday, and mentioned to him that some citizens in the town who are also my constituents have asked if we could put up a temporary speed sign, the ever-popular speed sign, everyone wants one now. So with the emphasis on temporary and that the request is to put it, there should be a miles per hour sign as you're coming in Warren Avenue off of 211. And I think it's an important point. I kind of stayed away from it because I know the town is sensitive about aesthetics. But enough people have said that with the lack of sidewalks and then with people coming off of 211 rushing to dinner, it's really an unsafe situation, plus with the post office putting people on the road. So I think it's a logical next step, and I'm sorry to throw that at you.
No, that's fine. And I'll dovetail in, we're behind on our installation of the permanent signs. I've had, I've got some staff redirections happening right now because people are out of the country or have other life events happening. And so I've had to shift staff around, which disallowed me from doing that. We do have our sites cleared by Miss Utility, so should be able to get to that. But until that kind of clears up, it's going to be another week or two, and then we should be back to full strength, if you will.
Okay. Yeah. So you think it would not be a big deal to put one there?
You know, I think we should get the town to concur if it's within town limits.
Okay.
Ultimately, the battery-powered units, which run about two weeks, I ran one of them out of batteries just trying to, it's interesting, you know, it's like 90 some odd percent battery and then it'll be zero. So, you know, they have to be tended to every couple of weeks, which is not a problem. I just don't want to, I don't want to do anything that causes VDOT to be upset with us doing these temporary ones because they authorized those five locations, and then the temporary ones are kind of just, they said, we're not going to bother if you put temporary ones up. I am, I am going to submit a permit application for the temporary ones to go anywhere there's a regulatory speed sign. Haven't done that yet.
Oh, which would cover us in a case like this? Okay. So in the meantime, if I, if I ask someone in the Washington Town Council to raise this at their next regularly scheduled meeting, they could at least vote on whether they agree? Is that what you need?
Yeah, I mean, I would even take consensus, quite frankly. I don't want to be way out in front of our skis and have the town then yelling at us and then yelling to VDOT for what we did.
Yeah. I mean, I talked individually to a number of members yesterday. It seemed like there's probably consensus, but I'll ask them to do it.
And then the idea is that it would be there for a few weeks and move somewhere else for a few weeks.
Okay.
Like VDOT.
Right.
That we're supposed to move like a foot at a time.
Okay.
You good?
Yep.
County construction and renovation projects.
Provided here in the narrative, just a quick update. As the board's aware, you have two parallel processes moving along. One relative to the historic building envelope restoration, and then the second for courthouse building or expansion project. Relative to the first, the envelope, there was a slight delay with our preferred architect. They had to clean up their State Corporation Commission license, which just got done yesterday. So he and I have a conference call set for tomorrow to nail down the final scope so he can really get going and fully. On the courthouse building expansion, developing RFP, I expect that RFP to go out next week or this week. And then with a return date of around the 19th of January. There continues to be a lot of interest from the AE community on that. So I think we'll, we'll have a lot of people to pick from. I think I will also, I will directly send it to the many firms that I've talked to either at BECO or otherwise. But I'll probably also put it on EVA, the state system, which will make our job a lot harder because it just brings everybody out of the work, whether they should be submitting proposals or not. But for this, we will cast a very wide net.
Excellent. One question I had is, to what extent will you or do you think it would be a good idea to reach out to the State Historic Preservation Office in some form? Because I assume that they've been involved in some of these other courthouse projects, at least in terms of helping guide the assignment of architectural firms, et cetera.
And when I say office, I don't know which office. I suspect that they would not stick their neck out and make any recommendations selecting a professional firm. But I think it would make sense to, to make clear in the RFP that we want the architect to understand the historic preservation importance, whether it's an addition or a new building or whatever, and that they, they should be cognizant of those requirements and make sure they understand it in their presentation to us so that we get a feeling that they are a good fit. You can design the most wonderful building, but whether you're a good fit with the community and understand what's happening here, you might, might be the best architect in the world, but not for this project.
Have we had any contact? And I'm vague about it because I don't know the, I don't know the name of the actual office, but.
DHR.
Okay. Have we had any contact with DHR in the context of our courthouse discussions or prior building?
Not that I'm aware of.
I talked to Morale Calvian not too long.
The individual that's been involved in the Spiritville.
Yeah, I talked to Morale. I, I didn't think we were really at a point where it made sense to engage them. But I think I mentioned it once before in a meeting that we certainly can talk to them. And I think she was active in Clark County.
They should definitely be part of the design process. I would highly suspect they would not, just like we aren't. Somebody calls us and asks us for a recommendation for a private firm, we won't do that.
Well, and she also may be able to, be able to point us to if there's any opportunities for grants that we may be able to leverage, things like that, that may, may not come into play.
There's some convoluted ways where you can like lease your building off, and we don't want to do that.
Yeah. Well, like I said, she worked with Clark County, so I think she's.
Sure.
Aware of our size and the challenges we have as a small county. So, and she indicated a willingness to come talk to us when the time was right.
Yeah, and I know we have a really friendly counterpart up in Clark County, Supervisor Catlett. And so I don't know when that project was completed, but that's another county. we want to look at basically to gauge experience. We can do that.
Sure.
When the RFP is completed, where will it be? Should somebody want to go out and take a look at it?
It will be posted on our website. It will be posted on the state's procurement system.
Okay.
I'm sure the newspaper will talk about it and somebody standing in the detector downstairs.
All right. You didn't need any action on that. Rappahannock Rabbit Inn region legislative program.
As annually, the regional commission pulls together a legislative program. The county administrators have talked about this a number of times, and this draft program will be on the upcoming agenda for the regional commission to formally endorse. As I've said in past years, for us, this is way more involved than we would really ever be pushing, advocating just for ourselves. But the number one priority item is school funding, and of course, we're on board with that. And it essentially just encourages the general assembly to get on the J-Lark recommendations and do what they said to do. And VACO even took that a step further and asked the general assembly to expedite. Knowing what we know about the budget, I think we'll be lucky if we get a tiny incremental step out of this, if anything, this year and maybe more next year. But there are a few other things that this, the pandemic-related site plan approvals, we do have one project that has caught up in this web, and this happened during the slowdown as well. The state says, well, if you've got an approved site plan or special exception, it remains valid until this date, and they keep extending it. And so now they're valid through July 1, 2025. So basically, we're saying enough with that. Things change around the areas. We can't just keep extending these approvals. Either companies need to move forward with their approval or come back and ask again. And I think that's reasonable, particularly for us.
I wish we could put this regulation of event spaces in capital bold letters as a county.
Yeah, and so that's, there are some changes that went through general assembly last year that require some rudimentary building code requirements for ag tourism event locations, but they're really rudimentary. And so we definitely don't want to erode our local powers any more than they are now, and that's what this statement says here. Most of the rest of the stuff is, you know, it's really standard. The easement thing was an Orange County item, really doesn't come up for us, where an adjoining neighbor needs an easement to run something along the edge of the county property, which might be, you know, anywhere, but there has to go through this convoluted public hearing process. Why is that really necessary? And they're asking to streamline that for that very narrow case. Other than that, if you have any questions on any of the other information, I can try to answer it. Transportation, luckily, is not an issue for us, which is always an issue for everybody else. So if you think that this is acceptable for us to lend our support to our peer communities and, of course, ourselves, a simple vote to endorse this as a local program would be helpful for your legislators to know what you think.
Well, I'd make a motion to move to endorse the Rappahannock Rabbit Inn region 2024 legislative issues.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, if I may, just since we're talking about the regional commission, I should note that the regional commission had a representative yesterday at the Christmas parade over in the artisan market.
Yeah.
And I thought that was great. And it just, I had not seen that before. So I appreciate their local presence.
And Compass Community Sports was in and around as well, and so.
All right. Update court cases.
Yeah, Mr. Fraser, or Mr. Whitson asked me to add this to the agenda, just to make sure it's clear to everybody. I sent information to the board. If you remember, several months ago, I alerted the board that the $100,000 coverage limit that Versa would pay on our behalf for the coverage year FY 2020 had been used up. There was actually an accounting issue with that. And so now we've been notified again after the accounting issue is cleaned up that that $100,000 has in fact been consumed. There's an excess of $1,938.50 that we will eventually be charged for. There is a $10,000 budget line in the county attorney's department to cover professional services, which was budgeted to cover legal services for deductibles and whatnot.
Thank you. If I may, since I asked to add this to the agenda, I just wanted to put this in context. The chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals came to one of our meetings at some point, maybe in the last, I don't know, four or five months, and commented on this Capielli litigation in particular, and suggested that we were perhaps dragging it out and in a way that wasn't beneficial to anyone. And I just, I think those comments landed somewhat flat because at that time, we could credibly tell members of the public that in fact, our litigation insurance coverage was covering the cost of that litigation. One of the comments the chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals made to us was that, you know, it's costing a lot of money, and how much money are you going to spend, and why are you continuing to do this? Now that we've exceeded the cap under our litigation insurance, it does become something that I think the public needs to understand why we are continuing to defend ourselves. And I know that Mr. Capielli is here, and I trust that I know him well enough, he knows me well enough now, to not take this personally, but I just wanted to revisit some of the underlying facts of how we got to this point with the potential appeal to the Supreme Court, so the public understands that when their tax dollars are going to litigation defense, it is not this board or our local government spending taxpayer dollars frivolously just because we like lawsuits. So this all started at the Rappahannock County Planning Commission with a seven-zero unanimous recommendation for denial of a special exception permit for a contractor's yard. And that came to our board in early 2020. And I did make the motion to deny and follow the planning commission's unanimous recommendation for denial, and that was supported by my colleagues unanimously. So we had seven members of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission saying no to the application for a contractor's yard via a special exception permit application. And we had five members of the Board of Supervisors agree and deny the SE permit for a contractor's yard. It then went to the lower court, and I had the pleasure of testifying in the lower court, and that judge decided to overturn our planning commission and Board of Supervisors unanimous decisions to deny, which goes against, I think, plenty of legal precedent that goes to the fairly debatable standard of local governing bodies in the Commonwealth and having the discretion to make zoning decisions when the question of that decision is fairly debatable. So unanimous no from the planning commission, unanimous no from the Board of Supervisors, a lower court judge who overturned it, an appeals court that then finally, in my view, got it right, stating in the opinion from the appeals court, some of my testimony and that of Mr. Curry, the property is located at the primary scenic gateway into Rappahannock County, that the location of the proposed contractor's yard is visible from Route 211, and that I testified that after visiting the property twice, I had no confidence that the property would be a contained contractor's yard, and that granting the permit would have an immediate and long-lasting adverse effect on any neighboring property in the entire area. And the record, according to the appeals court, said that multiple landowners, including Mr. Atkins, who lives across 211, informed the planning commission that granting the permit application would reduce the value of their properties, which the planning commission incorporated into its recommendation to the board. And logically, the appeals court concluded that there is an objective and reasonable, an objective and reasonable person could conclude that the Board of Supervisors reasonably denied the permit application, and that the board's decision was fairly debatable and must be sustained. And I just want the public to understand that when we defend zoning decisions like this, especially ones for which really there is no question on the part of either the planning commission or the Board of Supervisors, that of course, we will defend the scenic beauty of our county, and we will defend our authority and ability to uphold our zoning ordinance for uses on agricultural properties that are not by right, when it's not clear what the eventual use will be. And that's what we did. And unfortunately, now it looks like we may be headed to the Supreme Court. I just want the public to understand that any legal fees that may be paid out of the county coffers are frankly the result of protracted litigation that we believe is important to continue to defend. And I certainly was one that called for defending ourselves at the appeals court, and I'm glad we did. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I concur with probably ninety-plus percent of what Mr. Whitson has stated, but I believe I encouraged y'all early on during this process to actually have dialogue with our council. He was supposed to be representing the county, even though he was paid by the insurance provider. We didn't do that. We now have no idea how this thing got to over $100,000. And I would caution the board in the future to not only step in and make sure that we meet with the board, future boards meet with their representation, whether they're paying for it out of pocket or you're having it represented, you know, the insurance company. Just, you know, if they're representing the board, y'all ought to at least know what they're going to say on your behalf. And we never had that because nobody wanted to bring them in here. I mean, I never have understood that in the last four, five years, how attorneys can represent this body, and we have no idea what they're working on, when they're working on it, and what they're going to say in court until they present it. And that's how it got up to $100,000. I'm just cautioning y'all moving forward that you don't do that anymore.
Well, I do think that is a good point in that this is an appeal for the Supreme Court to hear it. What does that process look like, and what input, if any, is immediately needed by our council?
I've asked Mr. Mitchell that question, and basically, the briefs have been filed, and the pelees can either have an oral argument before a three-judge panel or file another written document. And we won't have a seat at the table until we find out whether that three-judge panel accepts the case or not. They might not accept the case, in which case we're not. If they do accept the case, then there would be some oral arguments before the Supreme Court, and that's where costs would come into play for our council.
So we're really in a holding pattern for now, as I understand it?
That's my understanding. And we don't, it could be a while before we know anything.
And I would just say, as we're not active in this phase, if we could gear how we proceed so it would be, let's say, less expensive if there's electronic options, you know, rather than trucking down to Richmond for the day in person, or some way to get the same end result, but maybe keep the bills a little lower. I do think we need to be cognizant of that, but we, I mean, we've budgeted for these eventualities, and we should proceed accordingly.
All right. Moving into information reports and correspondence, board committee reports.
Do you mind if I just ask one question?
Sure.
Do we know how much specifically out of this $100,000 has been spent specifically on this case?
I don't know the answer. It's notable. I can give a copy of all the bills, quite frankly. There were, I think, one or two other cases that popped up that year that consumed a little bit of that budget.
The majority of those is
The majority is certainly this case, and
Yeah, I would love to see it. Thanks.
All right. Building committee didn't meet. Did the rec authority meet?
Yeah, we did. Good trucking along. We're doing some housekeeping with the website. Yeah, just kind of launching into 2024, gonna do some pretty cool things with pulling the website together. We're gonna put it, the county has offered to host it for us, so there'll be a website where people can go and kind of like hit it, and then we're gonna put a, so they'll be able to navigate between that and the Park Foundation, and we're gonna, we're gonna put a donate button so that people can donate to the park.
That's good.
But yeah, we just had a pretty quiet, but good.
Great. You've had a busy year.
We've had a busy year. Lots of good things happening.
Public Safety Committee tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow.
Rules Committee.
We did not meet, and the planning commission, I mean, you all were there, it was a joint meeting. This month, we have had no new business on the planning commission agenda, so we've canceled that meeting for the 20th. And I guess if we want to take up with a joint meeting to handle the Airbnb business in January, that may be opportune time because there won't be a lot coming from the planning commission.
Maybe there's no more property that's open for Airbnbs in the county. Maybe that's why there's no business.
Sounds good. Fire levy board, you didn't meet, did you?
Did not.
All right.
And that this December will be the end of the next, this most recent six-month period. So February, March, issue will be getting together, and that'll be input ultimately to the budget going forward.
All right, going into the reports, we'll look at cash flow. This one's interesting.
Well, this, the cash flow chart, you can see the impact of the delayed bills. We delayed them purposefully this year, trying to get a few things ironed out. And so then we caught up, and you can see collections have been strong. This is not all of the revenue that will be due tomorrow.
I paid her.
Yeah. They'll be very busy over there today, tomorrow. But one of the great things that Bonnie worked with the auditors on in the audit report is to better identify your fund balance where it's restricted or, I can't speak to all the categories, but basically, this board has taken certain actions to direct funds to certain capital projects, for example. So you've already bound those down. There's certain grant dollars that have come in can only be used for certain things. So those, that's cash that you're sitting on, but they can only be used for certain things. And so that audit, and Bonnie will tell you, she's looking at the page, there's
It's note number 26.
What's the terminology? Is it restricted or?
What are the categories?
There are multiple different categories of fund balance. It's restricted fund balance, committed fund balance, assigned fund balance, and then what remains is unassigned fund balance.
So that's the actual extra cash, money, well, cash on hand on June 30th, which is kind of a magical thing. This point on the chart way on the right doesn't mean a lot to us, but we, using this curve, relayed it back, what does it mean at our really low cash money?
So committed would be something like the million dollars on the, for the buildings?
Exactly.
Okay. And then restricted would be?
Restricted is like the tourism, the, I mean, it must be restricted for tourism. That's there. The fire levy balance is there. And then unspent grants and other restricted contributions like the ground security fee fund, funds, that's there, under restricted fund balance.
Okay.
So the note now tells the story a little bit better of how that's broken up, which should help you make decisions better going forward and will help inform policies to help make those decisions. But other than that, I don't think there's anything in the treasurer reports that are at all concerning?
No, no, I know for a while Treasurer Nick was concerned that there was a lag in payments of taxes this year. And when she and I talked one day last week, she was very pleased that she was at that point, had collected the same percentage that she had collected at that point in the process last year. So that seems to turn around, and I think that what you're seeing there on the cash balance is indicative of that.
And does our, and I, because I haven't had a chance to look at our audited financials, does our auditor at least take note or acknowledge, take note of or acknowledge in the notes to our financial statement, the high collection rate and very small amount of bad debt that we have as a result of the treasurer and her good work? I mean, because I feel like it should be
An audit's not going to be that specific and say, that's a good job, but there is a table at the back that talks about the collection rate.
The historical data.
Yeah, because I
Yeah, because I would, I would think that that's an important benchmark for evaluating the overall financial condition of the locality. I mean, considering how heavy a real property tax administering we rely on.
Percent of total tax collections is on page one thirty-five.
Okay.
So I would encourage board members, when you're reading this book front to back, jot down your questions and pass them over to Bonnie, and she will seek to get the answer for you.
Yes.
You can copy me if you want.
Anything else in reports under?
Well, that restricted tourism dollars are getting to be real money. And I've always wondered if we shouldn't use some of that for the visitor center.
Oh, we do. Hundred percent. And so whatever is not used by that, then we're using for things that are attributable to tourism. And then even once we use that up, then there might be a little bit left over.
Well, the visitor center needs a new porch, right?
Needs to be painted.
Or the porch needs a lot of, and you have that outbuilding in the back too, which I'm not a picky person, but I have to say that outbuilding is getting pretty unsightly.
A full bunch of free stuff that a previous county administrator got. Yeah, those are opportunities.
I know that, I know that storage space is at a premium in that office. And so I, I mean, and people were willing to go out and rent storage space when they got put out of that storage space.
True.
So I just.
Bonnie and I never could understand what that meant.
I just wonder, I mean, I think that it would be nice to get some of those buildings looking a little better. I don't think you can even enter through the front, really, can you?
Oh, you can. The stairs, when they put them in, they're totally wrong rise run and it's dangerous. Don't encourage people to go that way.
That's what I'm saying. Well, why don't, why don't we fix it?
You can. Sure we can. There was opportunities everywhere.
How much tourism dollars do we have restricted in?
It's forty thousand dollars in there.
Forty-two thousand at the end of this, or twenty-three.
Well, you're talking about storage shit. And a park really needs a storage shed, like big time. We have all of our stuff. I know, I know, I know. Just, just hear me out. Is that we store all our stuff in the jail? And so I was like, hmm, what are these tourism dollars? How restricted are they in terms of, the park does functions that bring in tourism. You know, there's the fodder stack, that's fundraiser, it's different. But then there's the dark skies event. And I'm just wondering what portion of that could we, if we can use it.
We have our policies and our state code that guide this. And we're really watching after ourselves until somebody thinks we're doing something wrong.
Well, this looks like a stretch, this feels like a stretch.
Well, I think we can explore it. We just want to be very confident that somebody's going to say, hey, that really doesn't look like tourism. And now you're made, having to make a decision to pay yourself back through your other money or something.
I know in the past counties have gotten into trouble by saying, oh, a new sidewalk, that's good. Our tourists walk on them. You know, those kind of things. It does come back to bite. But it's worth looking into where we can use it.
I think, yeah, certainly plausible for things in and around the visitor center. That's pretty, pretty close.
All right. Review of legal matters, anything there?
There is the conversation that just had, just discussed. There's a discussion of the capillae and the process. And then the other cases as well. There's, for the Caporucio case, there's, January eighth is the, is the next time when everybody's supposed to be in court. I can say that the hand-drawn erosion and sediment control plan was found to be approvable by the Culpeper Soil and Water Conservation District, but disturbance is over an acre, so also needs the Houston permit. So I don't know how that's going to go. The individual owes the court eighty-two hundred dollars. If he doesn't pay, he might have to use the regional jail.
Today's the fourth, right?
Yeah. Don't know, don't know.
Okay. Anything under permits?
No, I think routine.
Okay.
Are we going to get a, an annual report from our zoning administrator? It would be interesting. And I can talk to her about it.
Yeah, I mean, to some extent, her monthly reports are a twelfth of an annual report. But if you want us to pull together a comprehensive thing.
I do think there is a year like this year where maybe it seems like, you wonder in retrospect what all you took up. But we had a very busy year in planning and zoning because among other things, we took back all of the, or many of the powers of the BCA.
She appears to be listening right now through Zoom, so.
Wow. I just think it would be interesting. And I'll, I'll put on my, my cap and do a retrospective look too. But it's been a very busy year for planning and zoning. And it's, it's good to take a look back and remember all that you did accomplish, even though you have a lot more to do.
We do have a good database of historical special exceptions, special use permits. And so sometimes it feels like, boy, we're handling a lot of SUPs or SEs. And then you look at it and you find out it's the same as it's always been or it's different. So it is a good idea to kind of roll that up and take a look.
All right. Going into matters presented by the board. Mr. Fraser?
Yes, right now.
I wondered if we were going to take up an emergency declaration, like they've done in some of the other counties for agriculture? If you all have had feedback as to whether that, that would be beneficial? I think early on, Mr. Fraser brought this up. And then there was the article in the newspaper. And I, I just wonder if this is something we should do and.
I did engage Mr. Love to try to draw from him if there is a need, if there, what services could our citizens might be able to, excuse me, access? What loans or whatever? He said that, he said that he did put our name in, as you saw from the state or federal declaration. But it's not clear to me what benefits our citizens can get. We certainly can declare and we can, we can look into it in more detail to find out if, what exactly does anybody get out of it if we have a local declaration for the drought?
Well, Culpeper's done this, right?
Yeah, but is it symbolic or is there, they're there?
Well, that's what I'd like to know is if they, since they did this, why did they do this? And, and what is their expectation? And are we in a similar boat or a different boat?
I think our agriculture is a little bit different than theirs, but I think it's a good question. One that I don't understand.
It would be nice to have those answers in place and be able to take this up again in January.
So just to say that if I find out that a local declaration would be very beneficial to some cross-section of our community, I'm empowered as the Director of Emergency Management to do that so long as it's ratified by the board at your next meeting. So.
Sounds good.
We'll see if I find anything.
Mr. Whitson?
I want to check with the FSA, Farm Service Administration in Culpeper as well. Because it may have something to do with loans. It may have something to do with programs that some of the farmers are into.
Yeah, two things. One, I did attend the Culpeper Soil and Water Conservation District annual awards. And note that there were three different families. Let me think about it now. And I wish I had the program in front of me. But there's, there were several awards issued to Rappahannock County residents. Janet Davis received a business award, like a business and innovation, small business award for her nursery and native plant business activity. And then Ms. Donahue family up in Huntley. Thank you. The Melissavich, they received a clean water award. And then Suzanne Zilonas and Andrew Haley received, I believe it was a general conservation award for a tree project that they've executed on their property on the FT. And it's quite a, if you're ever driving south on two thirty-one, near Mike Binneyak's to the left, you'll see a huge tree project on the left. And that's Zilonas and Haley's project. And they were also incidentally recognized by friends of the Rappahannock for that same project. It's really large scale and I think is evidence of best practices. But Summit, US State Senator Emmett Hanger was also in attendance at the dinner. And it was really great to, to see all these projects in Rappahannock County that have been recognized for their excellence. And then the last thing I would say, and I'll raise this tomorrow in roundtable discussion at the Public Safety Committee, the question came up with our latest fire ban. And Mr. Curry is aware of this because he and I had the same conversation with Chief Burke. And that is how do we, given that we don't have a radio station, given that we don't have a daily newspaper, given that not everyone is on Facebook, et cetera, how do we disseminate information as effectively as possible when something comes up like a burn ban? And I, I just raised that question because I was driving through Falkir County yesterday morning. And they had one of those flashing boards that said burn ban in effect. And I, I don't know where we ever ended up on our earlier discussions about acquiring those.
We considered it as far as CARES Act didn't pull the trigger on that vertical message.
So that's, that's one thing because obviously almost everyone who comes into the county is going to be on two eleven at some point. So that's one option. And then I guess the other question I raised with Mr. Curry was we have, and I don't know what the correct terminology is, if it's reverse nine-one-one. I know we use it very sparingly.
Mass notification.
Mass notification. And I think we really need to start thinking about when it is appropriate to use that. Because if we never use it and people are uninformed on an important, on an important issue like a burn ban, and I had constituents yesterday writing me, is the burn ban in effect or not? And so I think we need to think about how we get information out.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Burke about the using our mass notification system. And as discussed, as Art and I discussed with the board, from a legal perspective, we're kind of out there with our current restriction. But once we update the ordinance and leverage the state fire prevention code, I think I would be much more comfortable to use our mass notification system. Also, I don't know if you experienced, when I drove to Vaco and I got into Bath County, my phone started buzzing, telling me that there was a burn ban. And so that's tied into the same sort of systems that uses, I think, iPods. So we can look at all those things. Talk about them tomorrow as well.
Everybody's phones were going off in the meeting and everything.
Yeah, that's right. Even my son got one. He's like, Dad, there's a burn ban here. And I thought, oh, that's pretty cool.
Big brother.
Yep. Van?
I was actually just going to bring up the same thing every time it, well, in the past month, every time it's rained, I have constituents emailing me and texting me saying, how do I find this out? What's going on? Can I burn my blah, blah, blah? And so I have the exact same questions about the rave alert, I believe is what.
Yes.
And then, so then I want to ask, we, I think we did talk about it. Is, will it be in January that we'll be reviewing the ordinance language for this or? What's, where is this?
I haven't written it yet with Art, but we're working on it. I'll talk about that.
So, so probably in the beginning.
There's many counties that have this. We really just, and it's prescribed in the Virginia Administrative Code, what wording you need to have in your ordinance to leverage this fire prevention code for open burning only. So it's, just have to do it. So today, it was lifted.
Right.
This most recent time. So anybody who happens to be paying attention to this, after talking with Chief Burke and Darren Stevens, it was lifted today. And I would tell everybody, if you're not sure, go to the county website. So the alert was posted, there was an alert on the webpage when it first loaded that there was a restriction in place. And now there's a little news blurb that says it's released.
Yeah, I think that if we, if we can get that ordinance in place, that would allow us to, I guess, more cautiously use the rave alert to tell people that there's a burn ban. I think it would be helpful. I had a lot of people asking me. I don't think it's on the top of mind for people to check the county website for some reason. And I don't know if it was advertised in the papers, in the med rap or.
I think Rap News texted it every time it went into effect, we received it, if you get the rap.
Just things to think about. And I think we, I think you guys did a fantastic job with doing it. I think it was just something I was, you know, like, hey, how could we? Hopefully we just get more rain.
Just about mass notification, I think we talked before. The landlines are automatically loaded into the mass notification system. We talked about this when a citizen asked about it. The cell phone numbers have to be self-populated.
In all cases?
In.
Or is it like, plans do different?
Yes. Until recently, we've now been informed that for an extra fee, we can buy cell phone numbers and populate them. And Darren's looking into the cost benefit analysis of that.
Interesting.
But we did put on the county webpage at the bottom a big red box. So if you make it there and you scroll to the bottom, you will see a big red box to encourage you to sign up.
How does, do you know, in Bath County, when we got that notification, we all got that notification?
So these systems are tied into the federal system and I assume that's the link. And it's called IPAWS.
It'll be based on your location at any time and you pay off.
Which cell, which cell tower you're connecting to.
Well, that'd go while you're.
Right.
We're not connecting to. Yeah, I, three, one, the parade I thought was great. The number of people that came out with the potential of rain being out in the morning and stuff. I thought it was a great crowd. I did hear that parking over at the school got really congested and hard to get transportation over at some point. So that's a good and a bad, right? It was popular enough to, I think they used every inch of ground over at the school. Dr. Hill mentioned the company for barbecue on the night from five until eight. They've got raffle prizes, food is barbecue, coleslaw, beans, your standard barbecue food. And then we are Christmas caroling in Flint Hill, the village of, on the fifteenth from five to seven. Anyone interested, we're going to start at the dark horse as we had previously done at the tavern. That's all I have. Recession until seven?
I just did want to bring up something. I'm so sorry. I looked down and saw Mr. Henry. And, you know, we don't always get to have Rappahannock Electric here, but it's so nice for you to join us.
Really nice.
Very nice.
And I, I do sometimes wonder, when I drive around and I see a lot of debris on electrical lines, is that something that it helps you all to clear, to keep service intact when we have a weather event? Or is there, is there an interest in clearing that if we see issues with that?
If you see something contacting or very, very close to the line, please let us know. We do have a routine maintenance on vegetation around our lines. Like, who've they missed or they've just grown up since the last time they were out?
I have a question. How about that one that's going across two eleven, right across from the Catholic church? That's had a vine life.
Yeah, that is amazing.
Is that electric or?
I don't.
So chances are, if you see, if you see vegetation or woody debris leaning on a wire and there's not smoke, chances are that's a telephone or cable wire. Because if it's on a live wire, it's likely creating a path to ground and it's going to use that path and things are going to happen and the fire department's going to get called.
At the very least, it's not smoking, but we're not quite now.
Yeah.
Out of fairness to you, I mean, I, I try to discern what's a telephone line and what's a, we went back and forth on this poll down here and, you know, like where I live in Harris Hollow, it's mainly phone lines. Because I know you did such a thorough job on right of ways. So before we call you, we'll make sure that we call someone else.
See really skinny wires up high, that's probably power. If you see really thick wires, that's likely telephoner.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, the vines across two eleven are amazing.
Yes.
Which, which way on two eleven?
It's down here, near the Quickie Mart, across from, there's the Catholic Church's opposite. And there's a line that goes across all lanes of two eleven. And it's.
Growing up one side and growing.
The vine has gone all the way, I mean, it's actually kind of pretty, but it's.
I think that's a Comcast line.
Okay.
I can take either way on the way back to the office, so I'll.
Go look. If nothing else, it's amazing.
And you were in the parade yesterday.
Yeah. Oh, you were. That's awesome.
Good man. Thank you.
It was great.
Good to see you.
All right, we good? Recession?
Thanks.
Till seven PM.
Four forty.